Everybody. You see that Joe? Looks like we have everyone.
All right. Hey, Chris Stanek, is the agenda showing on the screen?
It is.
Yes.
All right. Steve, I didn't finish counting. I got eight. Do you have all nine?
Um, see me, I see Marty, I see Dave. They see Adam. John, Alan, Paul, Mr. Tarente. Nina, I see. And I just thought I-
Cindy Bowman.
I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
Nine, we're good.
Where's Irene?
She was there.
I see her now. Okay. Alrighty, let's get going. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Mrs. Burns, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Parentano.
Here.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mrs. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Boyle.
Spoiler on mute.
Ms. Boyle.
There she goes.
Okay. Mrs. Hollenbeck.
I'm here.
Mr. Kovacs. Mr. Kovacs, can hear-
Present. Yeah, yeah, my connection got unstable for a second. Yep, present.
Mr. Marington.
Here.
Mr. Sorillo.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance-
Flag.
The United States of America.
Americans.
To the republics which stands stand.
Thank you all. Uh, the mic's off. We have an announcement on special action items. 2.01, continuation of suspension of policy number 006.1. Make a motion whereas the novel coronavirus COVID-19 continues to create an environment where the Board of School Directors is unable to hold its meeting in a physical location. Now therefore be it resolved in accordance with Board Policy 003, that the Nishamani School Board, excuse me, the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the continuation of the temporary suspension of policy 006.1. Attendance at meetings via electronic communication originally approved March 24th, 2020, until the next meeting of the Board. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovacs. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. Mrs. Burns, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Allen.
Present.
It's yes or no.
Yes, yeah.
Sorry, I got distracted.
Mrs. Bowman.
Yes.
Ms. Boyle.
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Mr. Kovacs.
Yes.
Mr. Marington.
Yes.
Mr. Parentano.
Yes.
Mr. Sorillo.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine, yes.
Thank you. Motion passes nine to zero. Section. Section 3.01. Can we, um, ask the public if the public is using video? If the public, please mute their mics and, and turn off their video unless you're going to participate in a public comment. At that time, you can turn it on. It would save some bandwidth and make the meeting go more smoothly. We appreciate if you could do that. Thank you. Um, section point, section 3.01. The Board met an executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations and matters related to litigation. Our district mission statement, the Nishamani community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner. That brings us to announcement. Mrs. Burns, are there any announcements this evening?
Uh, no announcements.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, superintendent's report, please.
Good evening. Wanted to make sure I was off mute. Um, hello, everyone, and we have to start off a listing of our meetings for the balance of this school year. In the superintendent's report, it shows that we have a a few committee meetings that still exist. We have a educational development committee coming up next month, next week, as well as a facilities and planning committee meeting as well. So I think that's Tuesday and Wednesday next week, and then a business operation committee is scheduled for early June as well. Other than that, there's a listing of board meetings. We show them all as virtual through June and then for July and August to be determined. We're hopeful that we're going to be able to get back into the physical building, but time will tell on that front. District happenings, Congressman Fitzpatrick didn't meet earlier in the month. Actually, might have been at the back. It was actually back in April, but just recently, uh, from his meeting with Bucks County Public School Educators and Board members, uh, he also got from the group a really nice synopsis of concerns that he then forwarded on, uh, to some of the action committees there that he sits on, uh, that, that he's part of in response to COVID-19 and the concerns nationally. So it was really nice to see how he was able to take some of our very local concerns and get some national air for them, uh, and hopefully get the ear of people who are going to be making some decisions that are going to impact all of us across the nation, but certainly here in Bucks County. We have, um, we have a locker cleanout. I'm sorry. We have a locker cleanout that is scheduled this week for eighth grade and 11th grade. That continues a locker cleanout effort that started with our advanced placement testing students, our 12th grade class. And so we are progressing through. It takes a while for us to do this. It's a week by week basis. Uh, and we expect that we'll continue to work through that as these closing weeks of the school year end, and we will be able to get all material back, including things like our music instruments that we're working on this week and ultimately athletic locker room cleanout too. Anthony Devlin, our Director of People's Services, is working with, uh, the people supporting his program to do an extended school year opportunity for special needs students. That will be in a virtual format. I don't have it here on my report, but we also do have run over the course of the last couple summers, a program for our English Language Development Program. That too is expected to run in a virtual format as well. Uh, we're still waiting to see about the second or third school, any possible formal summer school needs. Uh, there will be informal opportunity for families to engage with us virtually if they're looking to still just maintain some academic connection for students. I already referenced the board committee meetings that are coming up. There's still some nice extra opportunities, some challenges out there. There's a STEM challenge, uh, that David Jeanette, our supervisor for the STEM activity, put together and some nice mittles, both by staff members and students across the district that have been on our website. Good to see. Uh, I actually was able to get into some classrooms. Uh, I say get into classrooms, uh, virtually through uh, some connections this week, and I was very impressed with, uh, teachers across the board, elementary through secondary and the work that we're doing, uh, to stay connected to kids in meaningful ways, personal ways, and it was very uplifting to see, uh, the good Nishamani effort we're doing. And then in addition to that, uh, Mr. Stanley continues to spotlight some of the Nishamani alumni who are connected to COVID-19 efforts, uh, whether they be, uh, medical related nurses, doctors, EMTs, or even those people who are out there doing some critical work connecting to the communities through, uh, work that is, uh, in, like supermarkets and the like. And so it's really nice to see our community being able to use our Facebook page as a springboard to spotlight some of the work that's happening to individuals connected to the Nishamani community. So it was, it's been a good week. We're really pleased with our, our work so far, uh, in our program and we're going to finish strong. Uh, thank everybody for their support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Brings us to section 3.05, additional reports. This, uh, excuse me, this month's semi-annual report is from Mr. Irwin, our business manager. Um, it is listed on Board Docs. Anyone that wishes to review the report can go to the Board Docs and, and view his report on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Now we're going to move to 3.06 presentations. Tonight's presentation is going to be our budget presentation uh, by our business administrator, Mr. Don Irwin. Mr. Irwin?
Yes, thank you. Let me, uh, take this. Get my screen to come up here a second. This is the Nishamani School District 2021 Budget Update for May 20th, 2020. You know, I, I think, uh, some of the committee members are up to date on this, but I just want to do a little recap for those who have not been, uh, with us to the last two meetings to let it, to make sure everybody knows where we're at. Uh, prior to the COVID-19, uh, revenues were estimated at 187.3 million. Expenditures were estimated 188.5 million. And while there was a budget gap there of, uh, 1.2 million dollars, uh, we were expected that we could make that up through, you know, normal attrition and other, some other minor adjustments. And that utilized the Act One tax increase to the full extent of 2.6% or 4.24 mils and no use of the fund balance. But unfortunately, the COVID-19 pandemic changed much of that, not all of it. And, uh, so then we began to meet in earnest regarding the new economic realities that we were facing. Uh, we began that on, on, with a committee meeting on April 21st. And the committee met, and at that time, we had pared down, uh, both revenues, uh, were, uh, now estimated at 183.2 million. And this was a revenue reduction of 4.1 million as a result of the pandemic, mostly with local taxes, if not all, but it still included an Act One tax increase to the limit of that 2.6%. Expenditures were estimated 180, whoops, at 185.4 million. And this was a reduction of 3.1 million in expenditures as we became more aware of the retirements, coupled with the administration implementing the six-period, uh, block and other administrative cuts that we made, uh, prior to that meeting. And so then we came back on May the 5th, realizing we had some work to do. And we had now had revenues estimated 183 million. This is a $200,000 reduction due to the investment income being overstated by 200,000, but still with the tax one increase to the limit. Expenditures are now estimated at 184.7 million. And I just bring your attention, at that point, they are less than nearly a million dollars less than last year's, uh, past budget of 185.8 million dollars. Uh, so it's, it's 1.1 million dollars less than last year's budget. And this was a reduction of 700,000 due to additional retirements, elimination of a confidential secretary. Uh, no increase at all, uh, on, we, we took out the increase that we had, uh, in the budget for health insurance and many other cuts that we made administratively, uh, to get to this point. But we still had at that evening a budget gap to present to the Board of 1.7 million dollars. And so at that meeting, we were asked, uh, and we, we provided to the Board a comprehensive list of potential programmatic cuts that, to the educational program. What could we do to, to overcome this, this hurdle? And we, we, we reviewed full day kindergarten with the committee, elimination of family consumer science at the high school, a reduction of a high, high school, some high school physical education, elementary band and springs, strings, sorry, band and strings, and also for instance, the security that we have been recently invested in with personnel. And at that, at that committee, we, we really began to understand that while there was, we could put some monetary numbers in some of this, they really weren't realistic because, um, they, they would not be properly implemented for the next year. Uh, there's just, you know, even any of those high school programs, while you potentially could make a change there, you, you still have to put those four or 500 students in front of certified staff, and that, that could not happen in time for next year and be done, uh, properly and be done correctly. So we, the, we left that meeting on the 5th with, um, no, no cuts to really, uh, for the, for the programmatic changes for education. But we did then come up with a compromise that we would, we agreed to reduce the expenditures for facility upgrades and new buses by 1.7 million dollars, thus eliminating the, the, the budget gap. We recognized that the, um, local revenue reductions that we were anticipating are temporary because of the COVID-19 pandemic and the, and the impact it's having to our economy. So we, we recognize that that, while that's a short-term reduction, we can make a short-term reduction in this one-time, uh, pause, if you will, on facility upgrades and bus purchases to overcome that. And while it wasn't perfect, it did eliminate, it did eliminate the budget gap without any educational impact on children, which was the goal of both the administration and the committee members. After that, we began then to grapple with the tax increase and the impact of that during very hard economic times that the pandemic has created. And there was a lot of, uh, discussion and not everyone agreed with, with any of it, but all of, or all of it, I should say. But at the conclusion of the meeting, there was consent from majority of the members present to move the budget forward to the entire Board for consideration this evening with a 1.6% increase instead of the 2.6 or 2.5 mils. And that, that came about just because of the 2.5 was a, a fairly nice round number to deal with. That's how that we, we, one time we were talking about 1.3, and at the end it got changed to 1.6 instead of the entire 2.6% increase. And so the bottom line for the proposed final budget tonight, we have revenues totaling 182.5 million, expenses totaling 183.6. This requires 1.1 million from the fund balance to balance the budget if, if expenditures and revenues go through to, to projections. And this then reduces the full 2.6% of the tax, of the Act One tax increase to 1.6%. And I, I want to bring to your attention that if that's the, if, if that goes as planned and this passes and we take it through to next year, because as a committee, we also looked at what, what are the impacts of raising taxes or not raising taxes, not only in this year's budget, but what that impact has in the future years. And we, so we looked at again at 2122 budget, and if we pass a tax increase of 1.6% in this year, we will begin next year with a 2.6 million dollar budget gap. And that's assuming that all local revenue recovers. And we also implemented tax one increase next year of 1.6% or 2.6 mils. And just some items to, to remember that the state gaming revenue is, uh, been certified by the state treasurer, and it's on for the entire amount that we received last year. So there'll be no, no changes to the homestead exemption for gaming revenues for the upcoming school year. And I also then just added the, uh, I'm sorry, that last line should be not 2020, 2021, to show the increase of the last, uh, 2.5 mils for the current tax year, taking it from 2013, 2014 through 2020, 2021. So that's, that's where we're at, uh, at this time. I'm open to any questions that the Board might have as, as a relation to anybody know that did that quickly. But that's been a lot of work the last two months to, to try to get over this hurdle that the pandemic has created.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Irwin, for that presentation. At this time, I'd like to open up if any Board members have any questions of Mr. Irwin at this time?
Yeah, I had a question, uh, Don. So this is, uh, the, uh, this is based upon us taking a hit in terms of facilities and maintenance?
Yes, what we're, what we're, what we're, we had, we had 2.5 million dollars, uh, budgeted for a combination of, uh, capital improvements for the, over the summers that we would, you know, typically get small contractors in to do our, to do, uh, whether that be paving, HVAC, those kind of items, roofing. And we also had an additional, $700,000 in the budget for, uh, purchasing buses. And so what we're saying is that if we take a one-time pause on that, not completely, because we still have $750,000 in that, in, in that grouping to deal with. If we took a one-time pause, that eliminated that 1.7 million dollars. And that's how we got to that, to that. We, we kind of, we kind of looked at them separately. We, we began to look at, how could we overcome the budget gap with 1.7? And then we turned to the tax increase and there wasn't, there was an agreement to, to raise to the tax limit. And, and so when they backed off, the Board backed off from 2.6 to 1.6, that created the current 1.1 million dollar deficit.
So other than, I guess help me understand, other, other than the buses, uh, and, and purchase of new buses, what specific, uh, can you give me an idea of the, of some of the, the projects, the capital projects that you guys were looking, that district was looking to do over the summer that are going to be eliminated?
If I go back to the facilities meeting on April 23rd. There. I'm sorry, I'm at that meeting on my other screen. Unfortunately, there's not, I thought there was going to be a list there of some of the projects that we were, we were anticipating to do, but we, we're going to have to regroup on the, on the 20th of this month, May 20th, at our facilities meeting to discuss what's really going to come off that list. We haven't determined what is or isn't on that list yet. We just determined that the, that the, instead of 1.8 million dollars, we have more like, uh, $750,000.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there any other Board members that have a question? I'd just like to add a, add a question, Don. So you're predict or projecting that next year's revenue will be short 4.6 million?
For 2021?
Correct.
Yes, out of the local, out of the local revenue.
Okay. And wasn't PASBO's estimate higher than that?
PASBO estimate was a little bit higher than that, yes. PASBO had two estimates. One was, uh, 4.6. I think one was 5.2.
Okay. All right. And just so the public understands how, how the funding works through Act One. Um, can you just give a short explanation of the implications of, of when you apply tax increase and when you don't apply tax increase, what happens over time?
Well, if you, uh, by, by skipping this opportunity to increase taxes to the, to the limit, you'll never get that opportunity again. That's why I thought it was important to begin to, to show the Board, the committee and the public what, what the impact is, not just for this year, but also for next year. Because, uh, in one of my slides last week, I showed that without any tax increase whatsoever this year, next year you would start with a 4.7 million dollar deficit. And that's, that's, that, that begins to get to the amount that you will never be, really be able to recover from unless you have some real growth in the community as far as assess valuation. Uh, you, you need a new housing project to overcome that kind of, that kind of deficit. Because it is expected that because of the pandemic and because of the impact on wages and, and the local economy, that our future Act One indexes will be much, will be significantly reduced in the future years as they are compared to this year. And that's why I'm beginning to use that 1.6 again. I think that's the outer limits of what we'll be able to use in the 2122 school year.
Okay. Thank you. Alrighty, if there's no other questions from the Board, uh, we're going to move on to public comment. Public comment, when you're called upon, uh, please state your name. Please spell your name clearly so the Secretary can take the minutes. Uh, state your occupation and area that you live in. Comments are timed, restricted to three minutes. And, uh, please, uh, refrain from any personal attacks. Uh, Mr. Stanley will indicate, uh, to the public, uh, how to be chosen for public comment. Mr. Stanley?
We use the raise hand feature, which is available, uh, at the bottom of your screen. And if you raise your hand, I will then call on you and you can begin to speak.
So at this time, anyone from the public, if you want to find that icon on your screen and raise your hand, you'll be called upon.
You, you get to that raised hand feature by clicking on participants and finding your name, and that's one way to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
All quiet.
All quiet. Alrighty. Then we're going to move on to special action item for tonight. Section 4.10, excuse me, 4.01, 2020, excuse me, 2020, that's 21, proposed final budget. Uh, Mrs. Hollenbeck is Chair of the Committee. Would you please read that motion?
Whereas 24 PS 6687 of the Pennsylvania Public School Code requires that the Board of School Directors prepare a proposed final budget at least 30 days prior to the adoption of the final budget and to make the proposed final budget available for public inspection at least 20 days prior to the date set for the adoption of the final budget. And whereas 24 PS 6-687 of the Pennsylvania Public School Code requires that the President of the Board of School Directors certify to the Pennsylvania Department of Education that the proposed final budget was prepared, presented, and made available to public inspection using the uniform form furnished by the Department of Education. And whereas the Board of School Directors has 2020-2021 proposed final budget of the school district in the required form and desire the same be made available for the public inspection as required by law. May therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani School Board of Directors hereby adopts the attached 2020-2021 proposed final budget presented at the May 12th, 2020 public meeting at the scene. And the same shall be made available for public inspection and be made available for duplication to any person on request beginning on May 13th, 2020. And that the President of the Board of School Directors is authorized to issue the certification of the Pennsylvania Department of Education required by 24 PS 6-687. Be it further resolved that the Board of School Directors will adopt the 2020-2021 final budget of the school district at a public meeting to be held on June 23rd, 2020 during a virtual meeting. At this time, due to the current statewide school closures, all public board meetings will be held online. The public is invited to watch and listen to these meetings on internet and by phone and participate at appropriate times. Connection information will be posted at www.nishamani.org/meetings before each meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenbeck. We have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Is that Mr. Sullivan? Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns from Board members on this motion?
I'd like to make a comment.
Go right ahead, Mr. Allen.
Uh, I, I just want to make it clear that, um, you know, we, as the, uh, Adam had asked about some of our facilities. Um, this is all trying to come up with a compromise. Um, we've made commitments to our labor and our teacher, you know, our, our service staff and, you know, We've made commitments to our labor and our teacher, you know, our our service staff and, you know, then the then the bottom dropped out of everything. Trying to look ahead, realizing that, you know, we didn't want to be put in a 4.6 million dollar hole. But we had to recognize that our friends and neighbors, you know, this is a bit of a burden to them. And coming up with a compromise of the 1.6, it's not ideal. Meaning ideally, we'd like to not do anything at all as far as raising taxes, but it's just eventually down there kicking that can down the road is seriously going to affect the the district. And I believe that would mean starting to cut programs, which none of us have any taste for doing. Being in facilities, I I can tell you normally that's right where the the cutting starts. But we also looked at that and tried to pick what was essential, things that had to happen. We don't want to get behind on these buildings again, so we looked at our wish list and kind of knocked, you know, that's where we made the cuts out of was things that aren't, we didn't feel were essential, something we could put moratorium on for a year. That that's where we we arrived at this. And again, I just wanted to say it's an attempt and a compromise for all of us coming out of that committee. And this is our proposal. You know, the final decision will be made in June, but this is what we have on the table right now as a proposal for a compromise. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Very well stated. Anyone else? I just want to add personally that, as mentioned by Mr. Irwin, the May 5th meeting was a, let's just say, very spirited conversation between the members and the administration on on what we need to do to not only be respectful to our community, but, you know, maintain, you know, what we've what we've built. As Mr. Allen mentioned, it was a big choice between a very, very hard number and a a number that was more of a compromise. I think that's a a great way to put it. You know, we're all concerned about what may happen if this pandemic has the impact that's being predicted. As we go into next year, we'll find out how many of these businesses recover and how many do not. But we want to position the district in the best place we can while still respecting the fact that you know, so many people have been put out of work and displaced and may not get back to work. So I I hope, you know, while no tax increases is is ever well received, this proposed tax increase is as minimal, as minimal as we feel the district can get passed and still stay on a viable track. So I appreciate the effort of the administration and our committee members on the finance committee for the diligence and doing what they've done to get us to this point. So with saying that, Mrs. Burns, would you perform an executive roll call on this action item, please?
Yes. Mrs. Bowman?
No.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenback?
No.
Mr. Kovacs?
Yes.
Mr. Marington?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
No.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
And Mr. Parentano?
Yes.
Six yes and three no.
Motion passes six to three with no abstentions. Thank you. We'll move on now for items for approval at the next public board meeting. Section 5.01, annual appointments for 2021. Section 5.02, appointment of treasurer. Section 5.03, miscellaneous items for 2020 21. Section 5.04, contracted services for 2020 21. 505, contracted transportation service for 2020 21. 506, BCIU number 22 Special Education Contract Services for 2020 21. 5.07 Bucks County Technical High School Budget for 2021. Items 5.08 and 5.09 are tabled. They will be presented in June. Item 5.10 bids. Item 5.11 exonerations. That'll bring us to committee reports. Business operations, Mrs. Hollenback.
Our next meeting will be virtual 6:30 with a link to be provided January, uh, January, June 2nd, and it will be to finalize the final budget.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenback. Mrs. Boyle, could you take both educational development and policy, please?
Yes, the the education development meeting, we'll have a virtual meeting on on the 19th.
Of May, May 19th?
Yeah, 19th of May. And and the the policy, I I believe the policy committee has been postponed until the following year.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. Mr. Sullivan, facilities and planning, please.
We have a meeting on the 20th. And as that will be virtual, and as Mr. Allen said, we will be talking about the wish list and what we need to do this year and what we don't need to do this year.
Do you know what time that will be, 6:30?
6:30, yeah, 6:30.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Representatives of ports, IU board, Mr. Cirillo, please?
The IU continues to to offer services virtually, and they are continuing to navigate their processes for next year, preparing for both virtual and in-classroom instruction. So they're moving ahead as as best they can during these times.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. Nishamani Education Foundation, Mrs. Bowman, please.
The National Education Foundation Board approved the new bylaws and changes that were discussed during the April meeting. The board is currently accepting nominations for the positions of NEF President, Vice President, Secretary and Treasurer until May 27th. We will be holding an election of officers at the next meeting. It's most likely going to be a virtual meeting that will be held Monday, June 8th at 4:00 PM. Nomination submissions can be sent or can be found at nishamani.org backslash NEF. So if you would like to make a nomination for one of those titles for our organization, for our board, you can do that there. The board agreed to award two $1,000 scholarships to Nishamani High School students who will be attending college in the fall. The names will be announced during the upcoming Nishamani High School Senior Awards Ceremony, which will be held virtually. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Technical school, Mr. Allen?
Yes. Technical school met on Monday, April 27th, 7:30 in a virtual environment. Two things that we talked about predominantly were the graduation, which was worked on, I believe I brought this to the board before, but they are planning a June 11th virtual graduation. But over some questions and concerns from the community and the board, the joint board, they've agreed to investigate the possibility of an in-person graduation sometime in July and or August. Obviously, a day and a place to be determined. I'd also like to bring to the attention that we talked quite a bit about the budget that was or is on our agenda to be talked about at our next meeting or voted on our next meeting. Just a couple highlights of that, I want to say that the total budget for tech school coming up will be 30.7 million. Of that, our share in Nishamani is approximately 5.2, which is a reduction of about 99,000 from last year. That's all I want to report tonight. Oh, sorry. Next meeting, Monday, June 29th, also in a virtual environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. So it's good to hear some good news. Thank you very much.
Work hard for that, yes.
Yes. That brings us to the PSBA, which is me. I'm going to spare everybody the details over COVID-19 and 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 the state situation with the budget. We have been encouraged lately to get in direct contact with our local representatives. I was personally able to have conversations with both Frank Ferry and Tina Davis, who represent the Nishamani School District. You know, we talked about making sure that they push hard with the governor for to allow us to have an in-person graduation as Nishamani is planned. You know, that, of course, that discussion hasn't taken place yet, but they but they know that's a hot topic for our community. We talked about, you know, the funding and how the this year's budget is going to be impacted by the by COVID. I can just say that our legislators are 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 well supporting our area. They know what our needs and concerns are, and they're working well on our behalf to try and make sure that, you know, we try to stay whole as we can through this as well as the community. So I was very grateful to hear very positive remarks from both of them. And, you know, as they work through this process at the state level in June, hopefully we'll have more information available to us of of our funding, whether it's going to hold or whether it's going to be decreased based upon the state's projections. So that's all I really have at this time from the PSBA. We'll move on to our second section of public comment. Same rules apply. State your name, area you live in, your occupation. Please spell your last name for the secretary so she can take the minutes properly. Comments are for three minutes. Please no personal attacks. Mr. Stanley, would you please provide the same instruction?
I will. So the raise hand feature is found under participants. I apologize if my screen is a little different because I'm a host, but it is under participants and you look on your name and it's one of the options to raise your hand. So right now I have one, Mr. McGinley. Why don't you go first?
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Just a quick question based on Mrs. Bowman's comments. Do we have a date for that senior recognition, recognition ceremony?
Mr. McGinley, we're losing your audio.
I'm sorry. Do we have a date for the senior recognition ceremony that Mrs. Bowman mentioned?
Alrighty, we'll get to you that, Mr. McGinley in comments. Is there anything else?
No, that's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McGinley.
Anybody else would like to speak? Going once, going twice? I think that's it, Mr. Parentano.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Then we'll move to future topics. Any board members have future topics? Hearing none?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Go right ahead, Mr. Kovacs.
Yeah, yeah. So I wanted to bring up, obviously, it's many, many folks are aware that we lost a a mainstay of our of our district, especially in the the Levittown area. Mr. Al Durant passed away and many folks know him from from Carl Sandberg. And I was, I know that after speaking with some folks on the town supervisors for Middletown Township, some of them who actually went to school and 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 kind of grew up with Mr. Durant. He was kind of known as the the Mr. Rogers of Middletown and everybody, everybody loved him, very kind gentleman. They they currently have, they're looking to see what they can do. They're looking to declare moving forward the the month of May as Mr. Durant Day. And I was hoping that we might have some discussion as to what we might do to to honor to honor his his memory. People like that are kind of few and far between, maybe a plaque, something along those lines. But I wanted to bring, push, kind of put that forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kovacs. I I'm sure most of the board and the administration share your concern with with his passing. And I'm sure we can work with the administration to try and achieve something, some form of proper recognition. So thank you for bringing that up. At this point, we'll move to board comment. Mrs. Boyle, excuse me, Mrs. Bowman, would you go first, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. McGinley, I do not know that date. Joe Jones, do you know the date for the ceremony? I don't think the committee was sure on a date either, right, Chris?
The senior awards was is on the calendar for May 28th. It's Thursday at 6:30. That's the originally scheduled date. I suspect that they'll try to keep that date, but they they may alter it, but my guess would be that they're going to use that same date.
Okay, so I hope that answers your question. And I just wanted to give a quick comment. You know, I really appreciate the hard work that the Business Operations Committee put into the budget. However, I have to reiterate the time just wasn't right for a tax increase. There are so many people suffering and out of work. And I'm sorry, I just couldn't support that action. Also wanted to give a shout out to all the emergency responders and the people that are working in our long-term care facilities and taking care of our elderly residents and family members. Thank you for your commitment and hard work, and everybody stay safe and healthy.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Mrs. Boyle?
I just wanted to say that that nobody really wants a tax increase, especially especially right now. But I do, I do believe that Mr. Irwin has has put it the right way, that we have to look look not only for the present but for the future. And I also wanted to commend him for for his excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. Mrs. Hollenback?
I have no comments at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Kovacs?
Yeah, just to dovetail on what I said before, we we lost a, we lost a great contributor to our our community. You know, obviously, our school community and our community at large, Mr. Al Durant was an amazing gentleman. My sons got to know him. If you saw him in public, he would, he he was the kind of person that never had a negative thing to say about anyone. And he believed so much in our kids. There were TV segments done on this guy. He was on 60 Minutes. So so again, I know that there was a a large outpouring. I know that Ms. Kelly, who is the principal at Sandberg, who gave a shot, I know Mr. I know I know Doc McGee also has fond memories. I know that for those people who are looking to do what they can right now to honor his memory, they did set up a a memorial for him in front of Sandberg. So for those who wish, feel free to drive by. Please observe safe distancing and and hopefully the the memory of Al Durant will live on somehow or another. And hopefully we can get to talking about that in the near future. Other than that, everyone else, please stay safe. I know it's it's not easy being cooped up for so long, but if you can get out for a little bit, do so, especially now the weather's starting to get nice again.
Thank you, Mr. Kovacs. Mr. Marington?
Okay, yeah, no comments other than to, you know, kind of echo the appreciation to the you know, the committee putting together this this temporary budget. I mean, it's, it is going to be hard on everybody. We all know that. And I mean, looking at it very briefly, I I think you seem to strike a pretty good balance between dealing with the hardships of today without forgetting where we're going to be next year at this time. So so I, you know, I think it it looks like a real good jumping off point. We'll see where it, see where it leads.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Marington. Mr. Cirillo?
I just want to say that again, the Business Committee, I I respect everything. I just want to say that again, the Business Committee, I respect everything that they, that they do. I know that it was a very difficult decision for them. I understand where they're coming from. Just personally, I know a lot of people within my industry that are not working, have lost businesses, things of that nature. And for that reason, I just could not vote for, for that particular proposal right now at this time. I just don't think it was a good time for it. But certainly not out of disrespect for anything that the committee and the hard work that they put in.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cirillo, Mr. Sullivan?
I have no comment at this time.
Thank you. I forgot to call on our administration earlier, Mr. Jones, do you have any comments you would like to make this evening?
No, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, Mr. Allen, please?
Yes, Steve, I just, as brought to my attention by Mrs. Bowman, I did get the date of the tech board's next meeting incorrect. It is actually May 19th and again, that'll be virtual and that will be at 7:30.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, just quickly, I'll follow up, I just want to, you know, talk about Mr. Durant real quick. I never knew the gentleman, but I know so many people that did. His impact, almost 50 years of continuous service in Neshamani, both as a community member and as an employee. And I am sure we will do something that's respectful of what the man gave to this, this community. So I want to assure the public that the board wants to participate in that. Otherwise, I appreciate everybody's hard work in this time. We didn't get much to talk about education this evening, but our e-learning's moving along as smoothly as could be expected. Still not ideal, we still wish we were back in the classroom, but we know that's going to happen. All the work that we do is moving forward is to get our kids ready for the next school year. At this time, we still have no guidance from the state, but we are hoping that we'll be able to have in-classroom instruction from the beginning of the school year. As I mentioned in my report to our Neshamani seniors, we are still intending and working hard towards having an in-person graduation. And we will remain committed to that. And to those, again, those committee members working on the budget. Nothing but admiration for the work that you've put in. This is very precarious times. I agree with everything that everyone said, those that could support it and those that couldn't. All those comments are meaningful. I am just, as well as maybe some others, and I think Mr. Marington stated it best, where we may end up next year, how much farther behind the eight ball we could be. And while it was a good compromise, the impact could still exceed our current scenario. So we're going to hope for the best, plan for the worst. And I want everybody to be conscious of that as we, as we move forward. So I want to thank everyone for participating tonight, please stay safe and we look forward to you joining us again in the future. I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you all very much. Dave, Cindy and Marty, please remember your other meeting, thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.